I just want to mention two things here tonight. The Winona State Homecoming is coming up on the 21st. And there'll be a parade that morning at 10 o'clock. It's always a big event in Winona. And I know we've had some meetings with the Winona State folks. And I think we're as prepared as we can be for any parties and that sort of thing that are going on that night. If anybody has any problems, don't hesitate to call the police. We also hope for rain.
Oh.
After the games. After the game. I shouldn't have said that. Also want to mention, we have some special visitors coming up here at the end of the month. Our sister city from Misato, Japan will be here with a contingent. We'll be welcoming them here at City Hall officially on October 27th at 9:00 a.m. And everybody's invited. The more the merrier. We have a... The mounted posse will be here. The fire department will be here. We've got all the mascots from the local universities and schools. So I think it'll be a fun time. And it's always a real treat to welcome these people to Winona. So they always give us a warm welcome when we go there, so I think we should reciprocate. That's all I have. Steve?
Just two things, Your Honor. I want to also chime in and thank the Winona State Student Senate for having a meeting and allowing Police Officer Sergeant Eric Engrave, myself, and Councilmember Scholmeyer, and one of the property owners to attend. And to really have a good dialogue about how we can preempt the situations from getting out of hand. They asked some great questions, and they're going to be doing some outreach to their students. So we look forward and hope that that will have a good effect. Also, I was going to present the 20-hour parking plan or recommendations. However, I was informed after the last meeting that Chief Bossrock won't be available this week. So it'll be next week, our next meeting. He'll bring a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig. Alexander. Here. Ayden. Here. Borzakowski. Here. Scholmeyer. Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the proposed liquor license fees for 2018.
I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anybody's here to speak. Anybody here wish to speak to the proposed liquor license fees for 2018? Last chance. Proposed liquor license fees for 2018. Nobody wishes to speak. I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion from...
I'd make a motion, introduce the attached order.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? And so Paul first, anything?
So I don't have any particular concern. I guess what I'd like to know is if there is any discussion about... You know, we've been talking about receptacles for trash and possibly recycling downtown. And one of the concerns is the refuse that seems to be coming from the bars downtown, and if any of these fees will be covering any of those expenses.
I don't have an answer to that.
Or would or would not.
They would not.
They would not.
No. George?
This is a license that is raised every year. My first year on council, 18 years ago, I voted to support the increase. I voted against everyone since, and I will vote against this one as well tonight. So I don't see no reason to raise this particular license every year, whether it's $10, $12, $20, it just keeps going up and up. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carries.
Item...
5-1.
Item 2.2 is the levy assessments for the 2017 sidewalk replacement project.
Public hearing, I'll declare it open and ask if anybody wishes to speak to the sidewalk replacement project. Anybody here wish to speak to the sidewalk replacement project? Last chance. Sidewalk replacement project. Hearing none. I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion.
I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and levy the assessments.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any carries?
Item 2.3 is to levy assessments for the 2017 Hamilton Street Reconstruction Project. Please note there was one revision to the proposed assessment rule.
Okay. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anybody's here that wishes to speak to the Hamilton Street Reconstruction Project. Anybody here wish to speak to the Hamilton Street Reconstruction Project? Last opportunity to speak to the Hamilton Street Reconstruction Project. Hearing nobody speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion.
I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and levy the assessments. Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Any discussion from council? George?
Yes, very, very good project down there. Looks very nice and good job.
Anything else? Paul?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Councilmember Borzakowski says and thank the street department for accommodating some of the requests from the residents on 7th Street. And it seemed like the project went rather quickly. And despite a couple of bumps, nice to have it done.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
And item 2.4 is to levy assessments for the 2017 miscellaneous utilities project.
Declare the public hearing open and ask if anybody wishes to speak to the levy assessments for the 2017 miscellaneous utilities project. Anybody here wish to speak to the miscellaneous utilities project? Last chance. Miscellaneous utilities project. Nobody speaks. I will declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and levy the assessments.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is a request for camping at Prairie Island at the Kiwanis Shelter from Friday, October 27th through Sunday, the 29th. Make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second it. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Al. Discussion? Michelle?
Do you want to tell people what the AdoptaCrag is? Chad, is this your program? John's program? Somebody's program? So that they know. Is this something that's open to the entire public? And I love this project, by the way. It's great.
Mayor and council, I'll call up our new outdoor recreation coordinator, Ross Gury, and he can certainly attest to that better than I can.
By the way, welcome, Ross.
Thank you. Glad to be here. So the AdoptaCrag is an annual event. This will be its third year. It's a partnership with Winona State University here in town, also the Minnesota Climbers Association, state organization, and the Access Fund, which is a national organization, largely based in climbing advocacy, but really recreational advocacy and land conservation as well. And so we're working in conjunction with those folks to get a number of people into town, as you read through in the packet there. And it is an event that's open to everyone, so in the next couple of weeks, there'll be a big market we push to really inform people locally as well. So the bulk of the cleanup activity will be Saturday, and with some fringe activity, I think Friday and Sunday, we're trying to really bring it all together, make it a whole weekend event, because we've got a number of people traveling from other cities as well.
How many people do you expect?
It's hard to say whether will be a determining factor. The first year, we had, I think we had close to 45 people or so. And I can't remember, I have to go back to park maintenance, but we hauled several thousand pounds of trash when it was all sown off on the sugar lift, and then some invasive species come along as well.
Well, thank you for doing this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is the Masonic Temple Drops Fundraising and Restoration Plan.
I'd make a motion to approve the Masonic Drop Plan for Restoration. I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Discussion? George?
Yeah, can we explain this item here?
We'll ask Chad to step up.
What we're all being asked to do here.
Mayor and council, you have three recommendations before you tonight. Staff is trying to systematically carry out your direction to restore 10 drops and sell the remaining drops and selected set pieces. So the first recommendation is to continue a fundraising campaign to restore the 10. So to respect our original donation the city has received, as well as the current pending ask the city has, I say continue fundraising. The first recommendation is not without a final decision, however. A final decision could present itself if the fundraising campaign falls short of a goal that does not meet the estimates to restore. Not to mention that it's difficult to set this goal without the authorization to seek quotes or bids. However, that's a very logical process. The city does not typically authorize quotes or bids unless funding is made available. So we find ourselves in an environment of which comes first. So again, this first recommendation, staff is recommending that the first action be a fundraising campaign, again, to follow the direction to restore the 10 drops. So that's the first recommendation that's before you. The second recommendation is related to the 10 drops to restore. So no action is needed if you agree with the Fine Arts Commission's recommendation within the agenda item, because you have previously taken action on the 10 that you've selected. The third recommendation is the plan to sell the remaining drops and set pieces. So in that third recommendation, we're recommending the sale occur in advance of the construction slated for early 2018. That's the summary of the three actions before you tonight. If you have any questions, certainly I'll do my best to answer them.
Other questions?
We're voting on...
First. We're voting on, just on the fundraising restoration plan. Any questions about that? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Item 4.2 is the Masonic Temple Drops Selection of Drops for Restoration.
Before we have any motions, Crystal Haggie is here from the Fine Arts Commission. And I guess I'd like to... I know we've asked you to take a look at this and whether or not we should substitute two drops, and you've now made a recommendation. And I guess I'd like to hear why you're recommending what you're recommending.
Yeah, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Is this on? Awesome. Thank you. Hi, I'm Crystal Haggie, Chair of the Fine Arts Commission. So our recommendation is to keep the 10 drops that we've already selected. That's the first piece of the recommendation from the Fine Arts Commission. We went through an extensive process, both a public hearing and a public meeting, where we had members of the public sitting in, listening to our deliberation for about four and a half hours at that second meeting, along with an extensive review process from all the public input. We did take into consideration the questions that council brought up at the last meeting. And during that process, and we feel like we made a diligent and responsible thoughtful decision on which 10 drops. So that's the first piece.
It's really the one piece that we want to hear about tonight is the 10 drops versus the two extra drops that we were talking about. So why do you want to stick with the 10 and not add the two, I guess, is the question?
Yeah, so I think, as I just answered before, because of the extensive review process and the extensive public input that we did take when we were tasked to ask which drops to save for the Fine Arts Commission, that because of all of the considerations that council had thought of or asked and talked about at the previous council meeting, we did take that into account. So we did discuss, you know, which ones would be more relevant to the Masons, which ones would be more relevant to other activities in the Masonics, such as weddings or screenings or things like that. And through those deliberations, we clearly decided that through lots of discussion, which ones would be the best for the continuing moving forward with the 10.
I guess I'm just kind of focusing on the one drop that could, you know, that was suggested that it might be used for a projection screen.
Yeah.
And that, in your opinion, and the commission's opinion, that wouldn't work very well? Is that right?
Right. So in the opinion of the Fine Arts Commission, we didn't want to save that drop, one, because we didn't receive public input to the degree of some of the other drops that we are recommending to save, and two, the argument to use that drop as a screen for film events or things like that. It is not a high-quality screen. It is not the type of event that would attract a quality of filmmaker or high-end production. It's great for, you know, maybe a community screening once in a while, but it's not going to be what's going to be needed for it to be a film venue or an independent film venue. That scrim is not adequate.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions for Crystal? Guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion from the council?
Well, a motion is not needed, correct?
Oh, I guess it isn't. Unless we want to change it. Okay. If there's no action, we'll move on.
Moving on to item 4.3, Masonic Temple Drops Sale of Remaining Drops and Scenic Pieces.
I'd make a motion to accept the plan for the sale of the remaining Masonic drops and scenic pieces.
I would second that.
Okay. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Any discussion on this?
I'd like to propose an amendment.
Okay.
The amendment would say, plan for the sale or move to a temporary or permanent storage space if a benefactor and space can be found to pay for storage and provide a location.
Okay. Is there a second to the... I'll second that.
Would you repeat that, please?
Yeah. So the motion is to accept the plan for sale or to move to a temporary or permanent storage space if a benefactor and space can be found to pay for storage and provide a location.
Clarifying question?
Okay. Michelle?
Just a clarifying question, because you got the second from George. Are you putting a timeline on that?
The January 8th is needed.
So you want to give until January 8th to allow them to find a benefactor and find a place to store them?
Yes.
Until Jan... So no motion, no moving forward on the construction until January?
Correct.
And then there would be no moving forward on the sale of it until...
January 8th? I just want to be clear on what you're asking.
Plan for the sale or to move by January 8th.
How does that work with the timeline, Chad, for the renovation work?
Mayor and council, we're anticipating a construction start date early in 2018. Because we're only at the 30% drawings, what we have is an estimated time of construction starting January 8th. Certainly could move back with the drawings that proceed to 80%, 90%, but that's the information and time schedule we have now. Again, you have... Obviously, the city has control over when we go out for bid and authorize bid if you want to move that construction date back. You obviously have the authority to do that.
Michelle?
So what you're saying is, if we accept this motion as stated, we couldn't actually try to sell them until the 8th, which would push the construction date from the 8th? Because how would you put them up for sale and store them? You need direction for one or the other, correct?
If you'd like to add the amendment, then I think we need to push the sale date back.
You mean the construction date? Or...
The sale date and the construction back.
Both. Oh.
By how much?
That's a difficult question. I would say that we would at least need... If we have an auction that typically runs maybe a two-week timeframe, and we potentially need to do that twice, based on this plan, then we're talking four weeks, so a month.
Forty-five days.
Plus, you're talking about the removal plan.
They have time to remove.
And then time to remove. So 45 days. So we'd move construction, then we would just say that construction couldn't start until the first part of March and/or until the drops were, you know, certainly out of that stage area. There certainly are options where we could start construction in different sections of the building. But I mean, I'd have to ask architects on how that would work, because the plan right now is to start with the stage area first part of January. So if we started with, you know, code updates, I can't give you a solid answer without talking to Miller Dunwoodie, our architect on this project, on if that's, you know, certainly we have the right to start someplace else, but what that does to a timeline. I wouldn't be able to answer that tonight.
I have a question.
Pam?
I have a question for Councilman Scholmeyer. Why would we do this? What's the reason behind the...
Assuming, or hoping that we could find a location to temporarily or permanently store the drops, the renovation could begin earlier and the pressure to fundraise for the restoration would be lightened.
Actually, construction, to do it right, the drop should be out of there, correct? The stored ones, the hanging ones, whatever, they should all be out of there, correct?
Mayor and council, both staff and our architect have stated to us that the best plan is to have the drops off and out of the stage area to avoid any extra charges, no matter how big or small that may be, to the contractor, again, because the contractor will see them as something they need to protect. And so that's a long answer to yes, that's true.
So sold or not, what's up there now should be out of there.
At a minimum out of that space. And again, that's probably the question Councilman Scholmeyer's going to, is where do we put them?
What would it cost? See, I think we're thinking if you sell a portion of them, the cost is borne by the purchaser, and then we are only responsible for removing 10. And I don't know, I asked you last time, and I don't think there was a place we could put them. Because I've talked with you subsequently, and finding a location to store them was an issue.
As far as cost goes, I mean, if we are going to store them in a city facility, obviously there would be no cost. We can't think of a city facility where they would, in a sense, fit or not disrupt other services that we have in city facilities. And so there certainly would be a cost if we would, you know, rent a space to store them. We have not, in a sense, dived into those costs. Certainly, we've heard many recommendations to put them in other places of the building. Again, not impossible, but the way they currently are rolled, in our staff's opinion, it's difficult. Some would say easy. We say, well, if we don't want to do any unrolling and rerolling, it becomes difficult to move 35-foot-long PVC pipes through the building.
Any other discussion on the amendment? George?
So what pressure would a timeframe put on us then? Like Paul mentioned, you know, for the 8th. If that's voted on, what's our next move? If it's, you know, voted and approved, what's our next move?
So mayor and council, that would delay our, you know, the authorization to go out for bids, acceptance of bids, and a construction timeline. What does that mean? Each month that we delay, it just delays the progress of restoring the building to a multipurpose functioning arts venue. So going from January to February maybe has little impact, except for those users that want to use the facility. You know, certainly, we've had discussions with Midwest Music Fest about using the venue and when it will be available for that event. So each time we move back the construction timeline, again, we're affecting the use of that building in the future.
So if we don't do this timeline that Paul mentioned, then what's our next move?
If we go as written.
Yeah, as the recommendation is, that we would sell the remaining 88 drops and subsequent set pieces. Prior to the sale, staff would need to bring back a list of the actual 88 drops and subsequent set pieces that would be for sale. You would... The action the council would take is declare them as surplus, and then we would proceed with an online auction as stated in the agenda item. And we would try to do that prior to January 8th.
Well, I like your... I like everything about your motion, Paul, except for the date. I think that that... I don't want to see the delay in the construction work.
Will you move the date up to...
November 15th or something?
November 15th.
Then it wouldn't interfere with the start date?
Mayor and council, we do need to come back to council, declare the items as surplus. We would do that... We could do it November 6th or then November 20th. So I guess if you wanted to set a date prior to an agenda item being released, that would... No, the calendar in front of me, sorry. That would be mid-November. If you want to wait to declare it as surplus until that time... Because remember, again, like I said, based on this recommendation, we do have to come back to you with a list of items to declare as surplus, so...
20th is the second meeting?
Sure. So what's the Tuesday prior to the 20th?
That'd be the 14th.
November 15th is when we'd have to have an agenda item prepared, and the agenda would be released that Wednesday or Thursday. So again, long answer to, I guess, November 15th would be an appropriate timeline that wouldn't, under this current schedule, delay construction.
I'd change my amendment to November 15th.
And who seconded this? George, would you accept that?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote on the amendment? All right. We'll vote on your...
What the amendment is?
To... You want to restate it, or we'll let Paul?
I'll give it my best. To accept the plan for sale or to move to a temporary or permanent storage space if a benefactor and space can be found to pay for storage and provide a location by November 15th.
14th or 15th? Doesn't matter. 15th, okay. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment carries. And we have a motion. We can... Are we ready to vote on that? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Moving on to item 4.4 is the Solarstone Community Solar Garter Subscription Complete Contract.
I approve the attached resolution, and staff recommendation.
I would second that.
Motion by Paul, and seconded by Pam. We spent an hour ahead of the council meeting discussing... We spent an hour ahead of the council meeting discussing this in detail with Al.
And councilperson Scholmeyer, are you including in your motion the recent change to the contract that was handed out during our pre-council meeting?
What, as what the new amended?
There were, yeah, there were three paragraphs there, ten, ten, and ten and ten point two, I guess.
I think for the purpose of the public and anybody watching tonight, we should have an explanation because this has changed since it went out. John, we'll let you do it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this past Friday, we were able to negotiate with Solarstone a different... some additional contract language that the council member was mentioning, and this contract language would protect the city in case of a change to the regulatory structure around community solar gardens that would impact our bill credit. So this additional piece would give us protection in case that the program changes, so we're not essentially out of luck.
Okay. Good work on that, Michelle.
I just want to commend you, John, Chris, Steve, for your negotiation on this. I think I mentioned at the pre-council that, what I understand, this is really the best contract of its kind, and we're the only one to really have gotten these extra things added into our benefit, so thank you for your work on that.
Paul?
I want to echo Councilmember Alexander's comments. Absolutely, a lot of hard work went into this, and the opportunity we so often are looked at as spending taxpayers' money, and here we have an opportunity to save a significant chunk of taxpayer money, $2.8 million over twenty-five years. I think it's really a good opportunity for us to go green.
Okay. Al?
I'll support the action, but reluctantly, because I still feel, I've stated, I believe, before, that twenty-five years is much too long for us to go with the contract with the unknowns in the industry ahead of us, but I will support it though tonight.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Carries.
And under New Business, Item 5.1, the Port Authority and Rivers Hotel Company, Inc. Development Agreement on Tiff Number Five at 956 Mankato Avenue.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by George, and seconded by Michelle. Discussion? There are none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Carries.
Item 5.2 is the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for Cleanup Grant Funds at Sixty Main Street.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Discussion? George?
Can Lucy tell us a little bit about this here?
I'm sure she can.
As long as she's here. Hate to have you go away mad, because you never called on me.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This is an opportunity through the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. We have used this cleanup grant fund numerous times in the past. The city has been the applicant in the past. In this case, the Port Authority would be the applicant because they're the owner of the property, and they actually approved this at their meeting on the ninth. So it's before you to approve of the Port Authority applying for the grant.
Michelle?
I just want to say that whatever happened with Sixty Main, I think it's a good thing that we clean up the soil, so I'm pleased the Port Authority is being proactive on that. So thank you, both of you, for serving and deciding to do that.
Paul?
What kind of disturbance is with business or parking or thoroughfare would we be expecting as a result? Where... What avenue will they be using to remove the contaminated soil?
So the mayor and members of council, the intent would be not to begin undertaking the project until we're ready to redevelop, so to speak, so that we could remove the soil at the same time the construction is happening. We wouldn't want to displace everybody with this parking lot ahead of time, and the grant gives us three years for implementation. So we would coordinate it with the proposed development project.
Anything else? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Carries.
Item 5.3 is the Winona Information Assistance and Referral Program for the Senior Advocacy.
I'd make a motion to authorize administration to sign the grant agreement.
Right.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Michelle?
I see, Malia. I don't remember seeing this in our packet before. Can you explain what we're applying... Is this a new grant we're applying for? It's one we've gotten every year.
Exactly. Good evening, council and mayor. It is... I've been there twenty-five years. It's the same contract every year. I believe in the last few years, we've come to a place that contracts need to come before council. So you're seeing a lot of paperwork and what we apply for.
Questions from Malia?
It's a good program.
Excellent program.
All right, well, thank you for all your work. If there's nothing further, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Carries.
Item 5.4 is the New Administrative Services Agreement with the ICMA Retirement Corporation.
I would motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the attached agreement for the city's new administrative services.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by George, and seconded by Al. Discussion? Al?
I have a question. How is this a similar agreement to what has been in place in the past?
Mayor and council, yes. There was some contract language that needed a change because it has been renewed several times on five-year increments, and the city attorney has reviewed and, again, got the right language in place.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Carries.
Item 5.5 is the Railroad Switching Over Mankato Avenue.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
I would second that.
Motion by George, and seconded by Pam.
And we can have an explanation of all this here.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We've been talking about the switching operations on Mankato Avenue for quite a while, years. Obviously, there's a lot of public concern with delays of just normal cars and emergency vehicles and all sorts of things. We've talked about doing an overpass. That was... There are a number of negatives on that, including the cost. There, we talked about moving the switching operations to a different location. The only location that really worked was over in Goodview. That was also very expensive, and there were some negative consequences for City Goodview doing that. The third option that we've considered is doing a warning light prior to the actual railroad tracks. And my agenda item says it would happen only on the switching operations. I've talked to the railroad since then. They recommend it happening anytime that the arm is down, anytime a flashing light is on. Says that's more typical, what they have at other locations, and works better. So what we'd be proposing is doing that, hooking up any time the lights are flashing. But what it would do is give you a warning prior to getting to the tracks, and then the goal would be to get vehicles to turn off on Sarnia and go to a different intersection rather than getting stuck in that last end from the other direction would be prior to Eighth Street, so they could turn off that one. It's not... In my viewpoint, that's not as good as the one in Sarnia, but it is an option. If somebody, if they're heading, want to get across the tracks, they can go to Hamilton or Franklin or somewhere else. The cost, I think I have in there, is estimated at $25,000 to $30,000. Part of that involves the cost of the railroad, hooking up the switch. Like I said, I've talked to the railroad. At this point, they will be sending an agreement, a relatively brief agreement, to us for review. What I'd like to propose is if the council is in favor of this, bring in that agreement and a source of the funds for that back to council for approval.
How much ahead of the switching or the passing trains are these activated?
My understanding is they may happen when the lights go on at the same time. I might be incorrect in that, but that's the understanding I've had in the conversations. If it could be before that, we certainly would want it sooner.
So it's still going to trap a few vehicles in there?
Yes.
But it'll at least give a heads up to others to not jam into that area and to seek an alternate route?
Yes. Also, is this only to warn people away from the crossing at Mankato?
Only at Mankato because that's where the highest volume of traffic is, and that's where the main switching operations happens, at that one all the time. I know it leads over into Louisa and Hamilton sometimes, but it's always at Mankato.
I'd like to take another look at that. Several times in the last couple of months, I've been on Sarnia, headed for Franklin to turn and cross over the tracks, and all of a sudden, the traffic is stopped, and it's because it's all gotten jammed up, and the switching operation is affecting the Franklin Street crossing as well. So do we have an option to warn people away from whatever crossings are being affected?
The... By all... It's easier to see that one. Franklin, you can see what's happening at that as opposed to Mankato, you really can't see around the corner. Certainly, we could put it on any one of them, we'd all about the same price, but I don't... I'm not aware that switching operations is supposed to be over on Franklin. It's supposed to be all happening further to the east. But we certainly can talk to them about it and see if...
I'd like to see how effective they are on Mankato Avenue before we talk about putting other ones in. My opinion. George?
I think of what you're talking about, Pam, because I was involved in that here probably about two weeks ago, is that Louisa was blocked, Mankato, and Hamilton, and then we all went up to Franklin, and, you know, that's where all the bottleneck came. And thank God, there's a stoplight there, and then we were... everyone was going through there, so...
Paul?
Will this be activated only during switching or for every... for switching and for every train? Every time the warning lights are down?
The railroad is now saying anytime the warning lights are going, that that's when they would recommend having it on. My agenda item talked about only in the switching operations, and in talking with them, they said they don't recommend that. So anytime the lights are on, this would be activated.
I'd like to know why, because if a train is just crossing and I see the light, I don't want to go out of my way just because the train is rushing through there. I mean, I would... I might go out of my way if it was... if there was a switching operation, but not if a train is moving past. That would not... I wonder why they...
I don't have a clear answer on why it is, other than that is the standard that they have in other places where this has been installed, and it's worked the best for them, but I can ask them what the reasoning's behind it, and bring that at the same time.
My guesses are going to tell you, because when a long train goes by, people get frustrated and want to get around it, so the lights flash when the train's coming. Regardless... I mean, I'm going to guess a lot of cities don't have the same problem with switching, blocking multiple intersections.
Especially at busiest intersections.
Right, at our busiest intersection. Probably for the train.
Al? Yeah, a question. If we go forward with this, assuming the motion passes, would the railroad then assume, since they have the warning lights in place, that they can block the intersection even longer?
Probably.
I would hope not, but, you know, again, that might be a possibility.
Maybe we can include some wording in the agreement or discussion along that line.
They've constantly told us, council member, that they will pull out of that intersection like every fifteen minutes and let the traffic go through. So we're going to install a security camera that watches that intersection, and it'll be time stamped. And if they're doing that, great. If they're not, then I'm going to be mailing that video to them every time that that intersection is blocked for a significant period of time, until they start doing what they say they're going to do.
Michelle?
I'm going to support the motion, but for me, this is like a temporary thing. I don't think this is really going to solve the problem. I think people are still going to get caught, they're still going to get frustrated, the train is still going to block the intersection. It's kind of like a little Band-Aid, when our real issue is that our ambulance and police and fire can't get to the other side of the city efficiently to take care of fire, police, and ambulance. I mean, if I was in the back of an ambulance, stuck on the other side of the road, and I can see the hospital, but you can't get me there, and I'm having a heart attack, it won't make me feel better to know the flashing light told the ambulance the train was coming. I mean, we have a bigger issue for me than this is going to help, but, I mean, I'm glad this might cause some people to feel better about the situation, but ultimately, I don't think this solves our problem. And I understand Goodview not wanting it, because then they'd have the same problem we have, which is intersections blocked by a train. So I don't know how we push the problem down to our neighbor. I mean, I just don't see this as a permanent fix. I just don't... I don't think it's going to make you feel better, George, seeing the flashing light when you still have to get to that side of... I mean, you have to get on the other side.
No, I understand your point on that, and like I say, one thing that we are okay with, with our rescue services, is we have an ambulance at the hospital, which is on this side of the track, and one ambulance on the north side of the track, the same with fire. And they can get out, so...
Yes, but how do you get from the other side of Mank... How do you get to the other side if you're stuck in the ambulance by the train? Where are they going? What I'm saying is the police and fire and ambulance are primarily on the river side, and if something is needed on the other side, they can't efficiently get across, which is partly why we built the overpass on Pelzer, so that they could zip over and get to that side of town, but your side of town is left without the same resources. And to me, that's... it's not okay. And I don't know what bullet we have to bite to fix it, but to me, if someone's in an ambulance, sitting there stuck by the train, it doesn't matter that there's an ambulance over by the hospital, because they're still on this side of the track. Or if you have a fire and the fire truck is there, they can't turn around, and they're waiting for the train, and they can see the fire, but they can't get to it, it isn't helpful for those people to know that the flashing lights were there. That's all I'm saying. For me, I would have wanted a more permanent fix that encompassed the east side, having the same safety options that the west side has. And I know Pelzer was a, you know, caused all kinds of problems at the time, but I would argue that it has benefited the city greatly, and it's a well-used street, and it has limited traffic interactions and problems, and the neighbors that got cut off probably don't care because they now have privacy. I mean, that little neighborhood back there is really nice. So I hope we can find a more permanent solution. I don't know what that means, but to me, this is not good enough.
But it's a start.
Yeah, that's what I said.
And I'm sure any permanent or better solution is going to be quite a ways down the road, so in the meantime, this is going to be helpful.
If there was an easy fix, you would have done it.
Years and decades ago.
You could have had it forty years ago.
Well, at least twenty-five.
And the overpass issue, that's, you know, Louisa, you got the businesses, here you're going to take out many, many more residents, and you have a school there, so it's a start. And I'd like to see more too, but, you know, it's a start.
All right. Anything else?
Now, here... Now, this will be going to the railroad, you'll be getting an agreement with them.
Correct.
Okay, and then, now, once this is all done, you said there's no funding in the 2018 budget for this. Would funding become available to do this?
We'll try to find some money.
So...
I would try to bring something back to city manager.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Item 5.1.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Al. He looks lonely over there.
Well, for a reason, I have a bad cold, so I'm glad I'm isolated from the rest of you.
There's a buffer.
I just found out last week that for those residents who live and drive on Gilmore Avenue, west of Highway 61, the overlay part of the Mill and Overlay that's been going on over the summer months, that overlay paving, I understand, should be getting underway within the next few weeks, so that'll be a good thing, and I think residents there and people who use that road are looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
You already mentioned the Japanese visiting, so I have nothing tonight.
Okay.
Nothing for me.
Paul?
Well, I again want to thank John Howard, Chris Hood, for their work on the solar garden contract, and I also want to thank Chad for his unending patience with the drops, and I really... And I also want to thank Chad for his unending patience with the drops, and I really appreciate your time and energy spent on this project and your information. Thank you.
George?
Okay, belated birthday greetings to senior Sugarloaf Living. It was their fifth, their fifth year, five years old out there, and a big thank you to Maggie Majewski and her crew. I know the mayor was there, and we had a pretty good time out there, so it was well-attended. And I'd just like to pass on condolences to the family of Richard Nibby, who passed away unexpectedly last week, to his wife and daughter as they begin their healing process, and also condolences to the family of Leroy Butchy Beck. I think we probably all know Leroy, he was around town in the wheelchair, selling raffle tickets, selling bizarre tickets, and challenged most of his life with walking disabilities and some speech, but very kind man, very, very good, good heartfelt man. So, condolences to the Beck family on Butchy's passing.
Thank you.
I would just add to Paul's comments about Chad. I know that Lee Gundersheimer as well has put a lot of time into the drops discussion, so thank you, Lee, and thank you, Chad.
And under the consent agenda, there are four items: approval of the minutes from October second, the final adoption of an ordinance for thirty-minute parking on West Third Street, the final adoption of an ordinance for no parking on East Mark, and a claim against the city by PJ's apartments.
Vote to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.